A few minutes after seven o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order. Karen, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard?
Here.
Councilmember Husnick?
Here.
Councilmember Munson?
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Here.
Mayor Bane?
Here. Ask all of those that are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Counsel, before you, we have an agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. I'm sorry.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Open forum this evening.
Open forum is your opportunity to provide three minutes of, up to three minutes of comment.
We could be on the roll call.
No, you may not be on the roll call.
There's no one signed up.
We have nobody signed up for open forum this evening, so we will move on. Our consent agenda this evening is items 6A through 6H. I will entertain either a motion to approve or any changes.
I'd like to pull item H. And with that, I will make a motion to approve items A through G.
There's a motion for items A through G. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries for items 6A through 6G. Moving on to item 6H, the water efficiency grant. Councilmember Beistrum?
I just wanted to take an opportunity to congratulate and thank Ryan Goodman for his continued efforts in securing resources for the city. I read through that a little bit and realized that it's one of 40 in the Twin Cities metropolitan area, so that's a good thing. And just wondering if Ryan could give us just a 50,000-foot view of kind of goals and, you know, what we're accomplishing with this.
Mayor City Council, first of all, you should credit a lot of the thanks to Public Works Director Dave Adams, who completed the rough draft of the application this time. So that was nice having help on going through the process with this. So previously, we were successful in securing this when it wasn't so popular. And with that, we utilized the funds to provide a rebate program for high-efficiency washing machines and low-flow toilets to replace older styles, to get down our water per capita use per day per people, so, which would make us continue to be more competitive in the future. And then at the point where we need a new well and all that, that we'd be able to state to the DNR. These are things that we've continued to work forward to reduce our water usage in the city foresight. As this next round came through, we purposely did not allow irrigation stuff the first time. This time, we're focusing, just because, you know, staff, to focusing just on irrigation, controllers that will better help the water usage, and then also the replacement of older sprinkler heads and other equipment, part of the sprinkling systems. Just because that's where we know that our highest peak of our water usage is, and it's 100% directly related to people irrigating. Obviously, in the newer developments, where we don't have the sheet tree canopy that we have in the older neighborhoods, and you can just drive through and you see these people sprinkling if it rained all night, you know? So some of that stuff will help improve that. And then just continue to do these grant applications and the education to the general public.
Great.
You don't need to have your irrigation programmed every other day. That's overwatering, even if you're in a new development. So monitor the weather, and these, some of these controllers are tied in with the internet and stuff like that, too, so.
Thank you, and thanks to Mr. Adams, too. Sorry about that, Dave. Didn't catch you in on that one.
Is there a motion to approve the water efficiency grant?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Motion carries.
And moving on to our regular agenda, we have Resolution 01272001, which is the election judge appointment. Karen, you want to walk, is it, are you walking us through this?
Yeah. What it is, is a presidential nomination primary, and it's just, the county handles all of the work, but the city has to, by resolution, make a determination of who the election judges are. County does all the training, selection of the judges. So it's basically just resolution of stating that these are the individuals who are designated to be election judges here in the city.
And this list is provided to us by the county?
By the county.
Very good. Any questions of Karen? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 01-27-20-01, Resolution Appointing Election Judges for the March 3, 2020 Presidential Nomination Primary Election with Exhibit A.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Just a quick note of thanks to those individuals that are on this list. It's an important job, and we thank you for your service. And I will call the vote. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. We are going to move on to our discussion-only portion of the agenda. These items are items that would be considered in a routine workshop session, so we're going to move into that workshop session now. We are, this is discussion only. We will not be taking any official action in this portion of the agenda, but do have a couple of topics that we want to give counsel an update on and also provide some additional information. First item is Item 8A, the Strategic Plan Update. Patrick, walking us through this?
Yes, I am. In front of you is the draft of the, what now is the 2020, 2024 Strategic Plan. As you recall, we presented somewhat of a draft prior to this. We have been working with the Big River Consulting and have been working through trying to make this a little bit more explainable, a little bit more clear. And you'll see that in the document itself, the first page is kind of a summary page with a chart that shows the vision and the challenges and the strategies that we've identified. The first part of plan just gives an introduction to and what the process was. I do have to say that when we came out of the strategic planning process, there were five goals that we came up with, or challenges is what I'm calling them here. In reviewing that, those goals and challenges, two of them were very close together. One was the business district, and one was the downtown. So I've taken the liberty of having those combined into one challenge instead, because really, working on business attraction or supporting business and starting to look at the downtown area, it's really one goal. And that's, I thought that was important, that we just kind of draw that down into one. So throughout the rest of the document, the challenges are laid out, first being the financial and the facilities and infrastructure plan. Second is, deals with the parks, trails, recreation, and lakes. The third is the community outreach, social media communications that we strongly talked about. And finally, again, going back to it, supporting the business, creating the correct environment, leveraging all of that, and relating that to the downtown district. The plan includes the strategies, or what I call the strategies here. Those are the target date. We put target dates on some of the most, all those strategies. They are target dates right now, and we hope to accomplish them. Most of them are kind of early, all throughout the process, the first three years, four years, really don't get into the fifth year, but knowing these kind of things, they can slide based on, you know, staff time, staff effort, and if we run into any roadblocks. And finally, I'm proposing a quarterly report on strategic planning that will come along with the financial planning, so that the council and staff and the public are kept up to date with the progress that we are making in each. So for example, if I were to report this quarter on the 10-year strategic, the 10-year plan, financial and infrastructure, I would report that we met with Ellers last Tuesday to begin some of the financial questions and processes on that. And as we go forward, we will fill those in and try to check off all those strategies as fast and as complete as possible. So if you want to go through it, or if you have questions or you have suggestions, please let me know. If you have suggestions later in the week, I can do that as well to change some of that, so I'll be happy to do that.
Dr. Guy? Or Mayor Bane, are you ready?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just one question. It's not like the details of the plan itself, but just wondering why we're using the word "challenge" instead of, I mean, it sounds super nitpicky, I get that, but instead of...
It just popped into my head, to be quite honest with you.
I didn't know if there was a reason...
Your opportunity is his challenge.
You see him as a challenge, I see him as opportunity.
I will entertain any new...
I didn't know if you had a specific reason.
No, I'm not married to challenges. If you'd like to change it to something else, please be my guest.
Well, I guess I just went through two other strategic plannings, and I was like, oh, that was an interesting way to, they are challenges. I glanced right over that, but I agree with you.
Yeah, and I do as well, Member Munson. Objective, this is the word that kind of comes to mind for me, you know? Or goals, might be another one there.
Goals sounded boring, though.
Yeah.
Objectives, I have no problem with that.
Other questions for Patrick or staff? And I'm happy to take overall questions, or if we want to walk through some of the detail, item by item. I'm happy to take a more measured approach, too.
I like that you have targeted date, target dates on here.
Mm-hmm. Yes, I also agree. I don't have any comments or questions on challenge number one. That seems to be, there are, I agree with the items that are listed, as those are like, yes, next, items that we do need to be focused on for what we are now going to call objective number one. And also, I like these target dates, as they align well with our budget cycle for next year. So I really don't have anything else to put into challenge one or any other questions. Counsel, anything you would add?
No, I just, I feel like in general, I need to do a little deeper dive into this kind of compare and contrast with some of the background work, you know, that we've done. I will say generally, I like the direction this is headed much better than kind of the previous model that came before us. So this is just much clearer and, you know, in a format that I think will really allow us to get the work done, you know? See what needs to be done and to get the work done.
Yep, agree. I also would like, maybe overall, setting expectations, I think that this is a working list, and I think when we are having those quarterly updates, certainly there's opportunities for what needs to be added onto the plan for a roadmap item, future to be addressed, what maybe needs to be reprioritized from a workload perspective. I think that quarterly update and the opportunity for some of those dates to shift or new items to come on. Certainly, I think our goal is to have an up-to-date document that stays up to date, and the only way it stays up to date is if we're open to making changes to it as we go, so.
Yeah, I've never really considered a strategic plan a static document. It's always been very fluid, so I would agree with that as well.
Our objective number two, I guess I would, my request as I look through that is, I know that as I sense the activities of Parks, Lakes, and Trails, there's a lot of activity going on right now, and I think we should reflect that in this document. I know that there are some items that are going to be started that might not be finished until 2021, 2022, but I'd like us to identify some of those near-term milestones of things that are in play right now and things that we will be doing in '20, and just get that visibility. My concern from an outsider looking at this list is that it doesn't take, it doesn't account for the good work that's being done right now and some of those things that will be done here in 2020.
Yeah, this is the more longer, of all of the goals, this is the longest-term one, because I believe there needs to be a certain progress on how we approach a recreation, parks, lakes, and trail plan. You know, as it kind of lays it out, there needs to be a need study to know, so really what the community needs, because we don't know what the community needs. And then once the need study is there, then what that creates is the plan, the park plan itself. So those are long-term. We have to also budget for some funding for some of those studies that we don't have in a budget now.
Right.
So that's, and then report out, and then how to implement. And a lot of that work should be done through Parks, Trails Committee and part of their regular agenda to begin to work towards. So that's why it's one of the longer, but I'll be happy to add, like the golf course and some of the other things that we're going through now.
I also think we may want to consider for the 2021 budget cycle coming up that we'll start addressing this summer, we may want to earmark or identify if there's additional funds. I don't want us to do is to miss a budget cycle and then because the plan's not done, we haven't accounted for anything, and I think there's a way to anticipate a bit of what some of those needs might be and build that into the 2020 plan. And I know we would have done that anyway, it's just I think we should put it in.
Okay, that's fine.
And I would agree with that particularly in light of some of the discussions that we've been having around our lakes and the health of our lakes.
Yes.
You know, potentially calling some of that out with a little additional detail here. I know there's, the third bullet under strategies appears, you know, to call out the lakes in the context of a master plan, but I would agree with that, kind of that, having that on our radar in terms of the budget cycle.
Any other thoughts or additions, questions related to Parks, Lakes, and Trails, which is kind of our objective number two? Moving on to number three, outreach, social media, communication. Any questions that staff has, or questions of counsel, feedback?
Madam Mayor?
Please.
We do a lot of emphasis on having transparency, and nowhere did I see that word. So if we could throw that in somewhere, it would be wonderful. Second, and this is the tactician-engineering me, it's the third challenge, objective, but it's the fourth one listed on the map here. So can you either flip the two on the map for either communication to be third and business fourth, or the challenge numbers to be four and three? I don't really care, but...
Sure.
It just, it threw me for a loop.
Sorry about that.
I'm just not, I'm very linear. Can you tell?
Could we, I appreciate some of these items are longer term and are going to need some more, like, more detailed policy things, and we'll need some, certainly there's some staffing considerations and budget implications. Could we, but I'm also matching that with, we talk about communication at almost every single meeting, and we're talking about, oh, we need to, you know, Emerald Ash Board just came up, or whatever the issue of the day is. Could we develop some sort of a quick and dirty communication plan that just is identifying and communicating to council what is, what's on radar for communications, just so that we're tracking those things and being just a little bit more systematic in what that looks like? I feel like there's a lot of activities that we are all managing informally, and I think that just a little bit of, just an outline of a, you know, a quick and dirty communication plan with topics and timeline will help us kind of keep track of those items, because again, this council in particular, it seems to come up almost every time we're talking about items.
Mayors of the council, one thing that I've done in the past was, not in my position here, but when I worked for the City of St. Paul, was we had editorial calendar, where we basically charted out the month and said, you know, here's our social media post for week one, week two, week three, week four. The issue is, at this point, it's creating that content, it's kind of, if the content's already been created, it's easy to plug them in. But what we did on that was, we, I tried to lay out every, we, every day's worth of, or the month's worth of posting, but also caught him in the fact that something can change, like EAB may not be on the radar, but that would prioritize. So, and that's part of this social media communication strategy. It does outline, when you dig into it, it goes through, there's informative posts, there's sort of like the engagement posts, there's the different types and how many you should do per month, and it gets really into the weeds, but we could start with maybe development of editorial calendar, just as a look ahead, which maybe just here's the five topics for this month, and we'll try to plug them in on website and social media as well.
I think something high level, I think we're at that point, would be helpful to have that. And then also, it puts it back on council to prioritize, what's the priority messaging? And so we can be having that conversation, because recognizing, you know, based on February, maybe this is the topic of the day, but then it gives council an opportunity to, you know, redirect that of whatever else might be going on that might bump, if you will, and helps us to kind of make sure we're aligned on what those priorities are. You know, so kind of come back with what timeline makes sense, but I think getting something in, even recognizing that we haven't done the full staffing plan. I suspect we would have done these, you know, that's something that's, again, it's something that's being managed informally today, and we're already doing it, but I think having formal recognition in the document and then just having that more, I guess, visible piece or that planned content would be helpful. Any other thoughts around challenge three? Moving on to item number four, which is related to business development, and this is where we have also wrapped in the activities of the downtown working group. Any feedback?
Madam Mayor, I'm just curious, I believe the EDA had a presentation tonight by the U of M. Was that tonight?
Say that one more time.
The U of M's presentation was tonight?
At the EDA, yes.
How do these dates here line up with some of the stuff they were presenting?
So Dan presented on behalf of the U. We didn't actually have a student presentation, but that, those materials were shared with the EDA tonight.
It was kind of just general stuff.
And next steps were, I wouldn't say time-bound, there were some suggestions for next steps, and there's certainly items for that downtown group to take and build into a plan.
Yeah, I think the first, first item under strategies is what we did tonight, is to start to talk about the downtown committee and what, and we asked the members for membership recommendations, and the review today of the Humphrey Study kind of pointed out some of the strengths, weaknesses, and things we should be looking at. So that's really the first one is, I mean, what we did tonight is the very first one on the page here, that we start this downtown committee and take off to where we need to take off to.
Thank you.
It's your overall, your overall question, the items that were identified are picked up somewhere within this plan. Is there anything that's missing?
There's many things I like about this particular portion, you know, from a contractor's point of view, especially holding a symposium would be a great idea. And of course, and that goes hand in hand, working with the watershed district, too, which is the next item. It might help ease some confusion and some things, and so I really like this, that portion of it.
You know, we, to piggyback on Councilmember Husnick's comment, we hinted the bottom section related to process and workflows. I think there's opportunity to specifically call out ease of doing business or, you know, customer service. So I'd like to see that, I'd like to see that in, just so again, that anybody from the outside looking in knows that that is one of our, those are one of our goals. And then also, I'd like to see us add some sort of a measurement. How are we evaluating that process? Are we doing surveys? Are we, you know, and I think maybe the goal is as broad as to identify a system of measurement or a survey process to kind of ongoing monitor how we're doing.
A lot of those comments come through the scuttlebutt, unfortunately, but it's not a formal thing, but a lot of, that's where a lot of it comes from. These are all steps in the right direction for that, you know, part of that, the whole billing and permitting and plan reviews and all of it, so.
Any other questions or items of comment this evening?
No, Karen, I think just, you know, just to kind of do a little bit deeper dive into this and think about it a little bit more and kind of reflect back on the process a bit, to be sure we're not missing anything. I think the one comment I would make in the development of those objectives is that, like, objective number one or challenge number one currently has a little bit of a narrative leading up to the sound financial plan and infrastructure piece, and I like the actionable verbiage of develop a sound financial and infrastructure plan. You know what I mean? So just some little wordsmithing, things like that, that I think are just kind of jumping out at me. But I think, I think I understand the spirit there, the spirit and the intent, certainly. And so it's, we're definitely light years ahead of where we were with the last iteration of this.
Yep.
So...
This is light years ahead of the original draft, no doubt about it.
Yep. So counsel of a homework assignment, take this back and compare it to your own project list of items that you've been tracking, and make sure everything's got a home on the plan that you're comfortable with and a timeline you're comfortable with. And I would encourage you to get feedback back to Patrick, who will continue to evolve this document into something final. I'd like to see us get this approved in the near term, if possible. And so let's take that feedback, and then Patrick, you can kind of decide when it's ready to come back to us for final approval. And final being the final until we decide to change something. Approval, correct? All right. Thank you for the feedback. Patrick, thank you for the updates. We are going to move on to our next workshop, workshop topic. And let me just set the stage a little bit on why this is coming to us this evening. The Airport Commission has been working hard on a number of issues, and we'd like to take an opportunity to do a joint working session between the Airport Commission and City Council. That is right now tentatively scheduled for our February council meeting, and, excuse me while I look at dates on my phone, that February council meeting is actually on a Tuesday night because of President's Day. Tuesday, February 18th is when we have this tentatively scheduled right now. But recognizing that we have a number of new members to, newer, stop calling you new, it's now your sophomore season, newer members to council that haven't been living and breathing some of these topics, like some others of us have been for a while, just thought it was good to give a Airport 101 session, just framework, set the stage. We're not going to get into a lot of detail. Certainly, we have an opportunity to get into a lot of detail at that joint workshop, but really just wanted to set the stage, provide you some background information, and certainly provide opportunity to ask questions, so that you are better prepared for that workshop session that we'll be having in February. So make this collaborative interrupt as you need with questions, and Dan will kick it over to you.
Madam Members of the council, I appreciate the introduction. Again, tonight, like Mayor Bane commented, or said, was basically looking at a primer for the airport. There are a lot of, each one of these slides, I could have drafted about a 40-minute presentation just on the complexity of some of these issues. So I tried to keep it as 20,000-foot viewpoint as I possibly could as we go through this. Three main goals of the presentation, I'll touch briefly on just the history of the airport, go over kind of how the airport is currently structured operationally, take a look at the contemporary issues that the airport is facing, and then offer an opportunity for you to provide questions for me if you need additional information. Gives me time to prepare that additional information in advance of the joint workshop. Just want to make sure that both sides are prepared for that joint workshop, or if there's a topic that you want to see added to the agenda, let me know, we can make sure we can get it added to the agenda as well. A brief history of the airport. It started out as a privately-owned airport. Originally was a grass runway that was out there. It was acquired by the Forest Lake Township in 1998, is when the process started, and it came into ownership as part of the largely doarty land purchase. A lot of the land that's out in Headwaters area where the YMCA is, Headwaters, 123 acres, all of that was purchased as part of that original land transaction. So I think, if I remember right, I think it was approximately 640 acres that were purchased at the time, 250 of which was airport property or dedicated for the airport use. Current operations, it is currently... Current operations, it is currently owned by the city of Forest Lake. We have 31 lots that are leased out there to hangar owners. The way this works is that the city actually owns all of the land that's out there and the hangar owners enter into long-term leases. Current lease terms are 25 years. We do have one that's on a 50-year lease, but that's a commercial lease. So all of, I'll call them non-commercial use hangars out there are on 25-year leases. We have made major improvements out there. The runway was paved in 2016, so it went from a grass runway to a paved condition back in 2016. Our city staff supports the airport. On the admin side, we do the lease administration. We do, we collect the annual rents that are due for, for the lease payments for the lots that are out there. We do budgeting, kind of more of the administrative day-to-day stuff is done by city staff. Public Works does all the maintenance out there. They do the plowing of the runway and they do the mowing of the grass areas that are out there. We've worked with the airport engineer to develop a 20-year CIP. One of the reasons that we go out 20 years is that MnDOT Aeronautics asks us to go out 20 years because their budget cycles are 20-year cycles. They want to know what that, what's out there 20 years, even though I will agree, 20 years out is tough to predict what's going to happen in 20 years. But MnDOT's budget is, is 20 years and they want airports, local airports, start thinking about what's going to come down the pike, what's going to be on that 10, 20-year, that 10-year window. Because you look at a paved runway, a lot of those maintenance activities take place in the second half of its life, not necessarily the first half. So they want to make sure that we're able to start adjusting our long-range budget projections to account for those more expensive projects that come on in the second half of a runway's life. All of the growth out the airport is guided by a master plan. You just can't go out there and put an airport hangar anywhere you want. There is a planned document that says this are the areas that are located for hangars, these are future expansion areas. So there is a plan to how the airport grows moving forward. The airport is served by an Airport Commission. It was established by city ordinance. It's a five-member commission. One of those members is a council liaison. Currently, Councilmember Husnick serves as a council liaison to the Airport Commission. What's unique about the Airport Commission is that the council liaison is actually a voting member of the Airport Commission. So there's four members and the city council liaison is actually a voting member. It serves currently as an advisory commission to the city council. And in its current role, what it does is it takes a look at issues that are facing the airport, makes recommendations and makes recommendations to city council for final adoption. So you've probably seen in the past, like we brought some projects forward back in November, October, November, the pavement and the master plan for council approval. The Airport Commission reviewed them, kind of dove into the weeds on those, made the recommendation, and then you as a council approved those plans, formally approved them, and then we brought those forward to start working on those plans. The Airport Commission in 2019, or 2020, has started to meet every other month. So they've gone to a bi-monthly meeting versus a monthly meeting. Some of the current projects that the airport is working on, two projects that'll take place in 2020. We are updating our master, our master plan or layout plan for the airport. The current layout plan, I believe, was approved in 2010 and that, well, that vintage somewhere, give or take a few years. We've actually grown, we've actually filled that plan out. So we have very limited room left for expansion. So when I met with MnDOT Aeronautics last summer, they kind of said, you're at that point now where if you want to do some future expansions, you need to update your master plan. So we submitted a master plan as part of our CIP projects back to MnDOT. It got approved last year, so we are actually going forward with the master planning right now. We've completed the public outreach side of it, so we did some survey work, reached out to local pilots at the airport and adjacent airports as well. The Airport Engineer was extremely happy with the amount of responses. He said it's probably some of the strongest response he's seen to surveys. So a lot of good response to our, our, our survey questions. And right now they're just starting to start looking at what are some of the alternative layout plans. They'll bring those back to the Airport Commission. They're sort of looking at what's a feasible layout plan for future growth out at the airport. Also in 2020, we have a runway pavement maintenance project. We're doing crack fill and seal coat at the airport. This is the first maintenance project on the new runway. So in 2016 it was constructed and now we're starting to enter into that maintenance phase. So you'll see that work be completed. I believe that's scheduled for spring. The contractor has some flexibility into when they're actually going to be doing that work. So they'll be looking at studying that in the, in spring of 2020. Both the layout plan and the runway pavement maintenance plan were both submitted to MnDOT for cost participation. Both were approved and these actually came back at 95% funded by MnDOT with a 5% local match. So we have, you know, very good cost participation on MnDOT's part. Typically what we've seen historically is about 80/20. They've, 80/20 is kind of the standard that we use. However, now MnDOT Aeronautics is funding some of these at a little bit higher funding rates. We're seeing 95/5 recently. So these two plans came through at 95/5. The airport is also looking at doing a lot of expansion. This one actually kind of predated the airport layout master plan. So this is a, a project that's been talked about for probably about a year and a half now at the Airport Commission. We did submit this as part of our CIP plan last year to see if MnDOT would cost participate in the infrastructure component. We did not get funding for that one. So we're looking at resubmitting that again this year as part of our, our CIP plan. This is an overview, overview map of the potential expansion area. What you see on the map is on the left-hand side where all the, that's the current hangar layout. So that, these are the current 31 lots that we have. There's actually a couple that are off-screen there that aren't showing up there, but this is the existing developed area. The area on the right-hand side of the screen with the gray taxi lanes and gray lots is the area that we're looking at doing the potential expansion. This area was originally scheduled or identified as a potential location for a T-hanger, for a municipal-owned T-hanger. Those are hangars that have doors on both sides where the planes kind of go in tail to tail. So you get more airplanes out there. When we've looked at these actual projects in the past, we have not been able to cash flow building. It's tough to cash flow, T-hangers municipally, kind of industry-wide. So last year was approached by a private group that said, hey, can I look at constructing some T-hangers out there? Let the group know that as a municipality, we've had issues trying to cash flow this, but welcome them if they wanted to get a plan together. That kind of started conversations. Then we started looking at what are some alternative layouts for this area? Can we do a lot of expansion out there? Looking at current lot dimensions, we'd be able to establish nine lots out there. The city recommends if this expansion goes forward is to extend sewer and water infrastructure out there as part of this layout project. Reason being is that if you look at the existing hangars that are out there, they all are served by city sewer, water, electric and gas. So we're given the proximity to existing sewer lines. Looking at the airport as a long-term investment, it makes sense to put that infrastructure in before the taxi lanes are extended, because once the taxi lanes are extended, to do any type of infrastructure, sewer water, the cost goes up exponentially. So the time to do it, to do the install of the sewer water is prior to that taxi lane extension taking place. We also have the taxi lane extension with the, are the two gray areas on there as part of this project. We would need to extend and add more taxi lanes out there as part of this project. We've submitted this to MnDOT for CIP consideration, knowing that the numbers work better if MnDOT helps the cost participate on the infrastructure. Rough numbers on this project, you're looking at approximately about a half million dollars to do this expansion project, project through the taxi lane and the sewer water extension to serve these areas. We've asked for MnDOT CIP participation in there. The local share we would fund through an infrastructure fee on the new lots. So that's how the original airport layout happened, was that there was an infrastructure fee that they took out. We got this many lots, the infrastructure cost was X. We divided it up amongst the lots. We charged an infrastructure fee to, to the existing lots that are out there. The same strategy would be used moving forward on this one. We do also have a waitlist for these lots. If this project does go forward, we do have 11 parties have expressed interest in leasing out a, a lot if they're available. The thought process would be as if we get this greenlit from MnDOT, we would go out back to that list and ask them to start, we would know what the cost would be. So we could say, if you're interested on here, we'll need, you know, you to submit your infrastructure fee. We hit a certain percentage of that being sold and we, we'd greenlight the project. So the, the funds for this would be done through the, the new lots that are created and not out of the existing airport fund balance.
Mayor?
Please.
Dan, can you go back a sec? You got some, looks like empty lots in between on the left side. You got a couple and then there's, are those actual lots or, you know, I don't hang out at the airport, so I'm not really sure if you're tying down planes here or what's going on.
There are lots that, this is an older picture.
Yeah, a couple of them have been built on. They're all spoken for.
Oh.
So on the left-hand side, you go to the top, the first row, that, there is a hangar there now, a new hangar there, and there is one empty spot, which will be, but it's spoken for, it's going to be built on this summer. These other lots that you can see in the dark gray, they've been built on. So, and there's about, I think, I want to say there's three empty lots that haven't been built on yet, but they're spoken for.
Yep.
And they are paying rent on them. But they just took those lots down early last summer. So they have a two-year window to, to build on it.
Thank you.
Dan, am I looking at this right? You've got nine proposed new lots. Is that a fairly locked-in number or is that still subject to some?
I would say it's fairly locked. And I think originally we looked at 11 out here was the original number that was kind of batted around. But then we started, and this again does not take into account that there's a wetland survey out there that would shrink that back. We kind of looked at what we had for mapping and kind of said nine lots seems to be where we should land. I mean, plus or minus one.
Yeah, that was kind of the issue with the.
That waitlist has not had any sort of deposit put down. It's just names on the list.
And that's right. On that list, to be fair as well, there's been, I mean, there always is, I mean, we just approved a lease transfer. You know, there always is that opportunity that they may not be interested anymore. So we would reach back out to that list to make sure that they're still, you know, interested in purchasing or leasing a lot at the airport. However, if anybody comes in looking for a new lot, we do put their name on that list. So that is a, we kind of keep a, a rolling list of who's interested in lots.
And you said that list is 11 long right now?
Last I checked, it was 11 long.
That was going to be kind of my question too, because reflecting back a couple sign, or a couple slides on the airport operations, you had talked about, you know, really kind of being encouraged to take a look at that long-range, long-range plan and anticipate future need and growth. And my, my mind, when you were talking about that, went to kind of that tech corridor area and some potential, I mean, I could see some potential airport utilization, you know, if we end up getting that area developed. And so are we underbuilding here, I guess was my, kind of my question, when we know we have 11 on the waiting list already for?
I would like to address that. The problem is we're kind of out of room.
Ah, okay.
Here on this end. There is a commercial hangar that's not, it's right about here going up, that, it's, it's a bigger hangar.
Okay.
You know, they're going to use it for maintenance and that kind of thing. I think they've been, we've been exploring possibility even going back to the other end. There's a field on the north end.
Mm-hmm.
But you have to start all over with, you know, infrastructure and that kind of thing too. So, but right now we're, the way it was laid out originally, we're kind of squeezed in. But I, I agree with you. It's going to, the man is going to be there.
I think the other factor to kind of consider is that there is some limits on size of aircraft based on taxi or runway length. And so we are, you know, all existing plans and current airport layout plan would be kind of similar sized aircraft to what we're supporting today. Some of those more larger aircraft that may be of interest to, you know, larger businesses, we probably don't have the runway space for that. But, but certainly there is some, some, some efficiencies or some things that, some benefits that an airport would provide even of aircraft to our size that are, should, are of interest to business owners and it's an asset we should be highlighting.
Absolutely. And that's one thing that we do if we reach out. I always mention that we have, you know, municipal-owned airport when I talk to other business owners, because again, some of them, you know, fly in for meetings and whatnot. So it has, you know, they do, some of them do express interest in that and they view that as a, as a positive. Kind of going back, so the, some of the, you know, that's sort of what we're doing on the planning side and some of the current project side. Some of the contemporary issues that the airport faces are budgetary. There's some budgetary concerns, not short-term, but long-term, which I'll get to in a moment. There's a $280 flat fee that was charged to existing leaseholders as part of the paving project. And then there's also multiple iterations of the, the original leases that were out there. So there's some conversations about, you know, I won't go into detail of the line-by-line, what we want to make changes to, but just kind of want to bring that to the council's attention, that hangar leases is also an issue that's been talked about at the airport. Brief budget overview. Wanted to be very clear that current revenues do cover operational expenses out at the airport. So the airport is not losing money by any means on a year, on a year-over-year basis. It is, its revenues are covering its existing operational expenses. However, when you plug that 20-year CIP in, that's when all of a sudden you start to see some budgetary challenges that are on the horizon. And you have to look pretty far to the future. You have to go beyond that 10-year mark to see the numbers almost invert. So that's, you know, why we developed that 20-year CIP, so we can start looking at long-range, because in 20 years, those expenses are going to be there. And we don't want to kick the can down the road and sort of have the Airport Commission in 20 years be stuck with not having the funding available to make sure that it meets its maintenance requirements. Airport revenues. Currently leaseholders are contributing on average, give or take approximately $33,000 a year to airport budget. The city contributes $20,000 on average through the ag lease contributions. We do ag lease revenues out at the airport, the Headwaters 123 and some other land that's adjacent to the airport. Those revenue totals approximately $20,000 a year and those are deposited directly into the airport fund. MnDOT operations grant. We also get a MnDOT operational grant annually. It's approximately $18,500. However, that's not just free money. We do have to show an expense to that. So there's a direct offset on the expense side for that grant operation. But we do get help from MnDOT to maintain that airport on an annual basis. We also get some revenues. There's some profit on fuel sales that are out there as well. So those are the three main revenue sides. Also just want to make council fully aware that the city does not fully charge back all of the staff time required for airport operations. So part of my wages does not get charged back to the airport fund. So there is some softer costs that, you know, the airport does not realize at this point, just due to that we don't fully charge back all staff time associated with that. We do charge back public works time though, so we are recouping some of them. We're just not recouping all expenses, labor expenses to the airport fund. Current rents, current rents are, on the non-commercial leads are 10.3 cents a square foot plus a $280 flat fee. It gives you, lot sizes do vary slightly, but on average the rent for a leaseholder out there is 1,021.60. On the commercial side, we do charge commercial leaseholders a little bit more. It's 15.5 cents a square foot plus a $280 flat charge. Rent increases are tied to CPI. They adjust every other year. So it's not an every-year adjustment that we do. We do an every other year CPI adjustment and we adjust it to CPIU based on the Minneapolis-St. Paul index. Again, starting to look at some of the long-range stuff for the airports. On the horizon, we are probably going to see a decrease in ag rent coming in. Two reasons is that when we first did our ag rent, our, our lease price per acre, we did that five years ago. The market for ag rent was a lot different five years ago than it is now. Pricing per acre has gone down just as the farm market in general has become softer and the economy's not, has hit them pretty hard. So we are seeing decreases in the price per acre that we can charge for ag rent. We also are seeing decreases in the over amount, amount of acres that we are currently renting out. That's going to be expressly problematic if that 100, Headwaters 123 does sell. That's where the bulk of that ag rent comes from. So there's a, on the horizon, there's going to be a decrease in that ag rent as part of that. Same on the forestland nursery rent. That also gets placed in the airport fund. If that rent goes away as part of any type of redevelopment that happens on that forestland site or the city-owned land that's south of there, there's a possibility that that rent could go away as well. So want those two decreases, want council to be aware of that. And also just that every other year rent increase, and if you factor in annual CPI rate on your budget, you're never going to keep track of inflation there. So you're always going to be one year behind and your adjustments are never going to keep intact. So you kind of put those three together. You do have a kind of a storm that's brewing on the horizon, especially when you start to increase those future expenses. That paved runway, there's no way to cut it. It does lead to increased maintenance costs. A grass strip runway is a lot cheaper to maintain. You go out there and mow it, you pack it. There's less hard costs associated with that. When you pave it, you do have increased maintenance costs. We do need to address those costs long-term. And there's been some conversation at the airport, can't we just grow, grow our way out of this, you know? And by that means, can't we just get more lots online and we'll have more revenues coming in and that'll solve the issue? Growth will help. It'll help decrease the amount there, but we're not going to be able to grow, grow our way out of this. Our revenues from leases is never going to meet the expenses that we need to cover those long-range expenses. So we're not going to be able to grow our way out of it. And additionally, you know, growth at the airport, you know, it is surrounded by residential. We're going to have a spot where the number of takeoffs and landings out there, we're going to have some impact on the neighboring, surrounding neighborhoods as well. That balance, there's going to be a balancing point between helping. Um, that balance, there's gonna be a balancing point between how much can we grow based on where the location is, land available and what the neighborhoods are. So just to be aware that we're not gonna be able to just add another, say, 75 hangars and that's gonna solve the issue. Um, the 20-year CIP, what we developed is a maintenance-only CIP out there. I basically stripped it back down and said, based on our new, what we have out there for assets, I had the airport engineer develop a 20-year pavement maintenance strategy for the airport knowing this is sort of worst-case scenario of what we can expense for all of our maintenance expenses out there. This does not include any other improvement projects or expansion projects. Does not include like additional runway lights or any type of, you know, expansion to the arrival departure building that's out there. This is basically a lights-on maintenance project. Um, we look at that, I funded this at approximately the 90/10 match that it, MinDOT Aeronautics is currently doing. It, it's gonna be tough to present out what MinDOT budget looks like in 20 years. Uh, but 90/10 is kinda what we're looking at. And the other reality is if it goes back to 80/20, we just gotta add 10% on the city share side. So adjust up or down, but 90/10 is what I used to factor this in. Um, over the next 20 years, we have approximately $3.5 million worth of projects that are required per the, um, CIP plan. The city share of that would be 364,000. Uh, you see that 2029 million overlay project isn't a different color. I had a conversation with Silas and I just said, look, if we look out in 10 years and we do a million overlay out there, are we gonna need to do a full depth, a runway reclamation? We're basically reconstructed in 10 years after that. And he said, possibly, possibly not. So some of this is gonna depend on how that runs out. But I wanted to kinda create the situation where we kind of, all the projects on the table. And if we get to that 2029 million overlay project and we don't need to do it, we can adjust what we need to, you know, kind of earmark for that long-term project down because we'll have an additional 90,000. But this is sort of worst-case scenario, um, for the 20-year CIP. When I plugged that into the, the airport fund balance projections, um, this is what the, this is what you get. There's a lot of lines on here and I'll explain it. The, the blue line that's, um, runs up and down, that is the, the fund balance. That's starting with the fund balance of $100,000 in 2020, which is approximately what the current airport fund balance is. That has a city or the airport fund, um, we're contributing $6,000 a year to maintenance activities over the course of this projection. So you'll see from between 2020 and 2030, we see increases going up in there. There's a small decrease due to one project happening. But it's from 2030 to 2040 is when those bulk of those expenses happen. And what you see is a pretty steep decline in, in revenue, in fund balance that's there. The red line that's kinda goes across, that's the minimum recommendation. That's half the fund balance to cover those expenses that come between January and June. We don't collect rents until after June for the following year. So we do have a gap. We need to maintain some balance or some fund balance to account for first-of-the-year expenses. So you see, it, it's not the first 10 years where the issue lies. It's the second portion of that is where we have to get that addressed. And this is again, why MinDOT wants us to look out 20 years, cause if I looked at just 10 years, we're fine. But it's that 20-year lookout for all of a sudden, it's, it starts to shift. Um, so kinda shifting gears a little bit, but still within the budgetary, uh, side of it. Um, one of the issues that, um, the airport commission is asked to have brought up at the joint workshop is the $280 flat fee. This has been talked about at the airport commission since it was enacted back in 2017, I think was the first year, 16 or 17 was the first year, um, it was implemented. Um, where this originated was as part of the original paving project. That original paving project was a 90/10 cost share match. It was approximately a $3 million project. The city share was $300,000. The city council at the time said, we'll put in 150,000. Airport commission, you need to figure out your $150,000 contribution to the paving project. Based on that 150,000 contribution that the airport commission needed to make, the $280 flat fee was the, the brainchild of what, what came out of that process. Um, the airport commission did review it. Um, it did, was recommended for approval on, on 3/21/16 according to the benefit of the airport commission. So it was an airport, um, commission reviewed and recommended, recommended project. Uh, council did approve it and it was implemented in 2016. Um, the airport commission at this point desires this fee to be eliminated. They, they, they feel, um, that to kinda simplify it, the way that it was put forward was not probably done in the most transparent and upfront way. This predates, you know, anybody, me being involved in, with the airport commission. So I can't speak to how that process fully played out. I was not, I'm a part of that process. Um, they also feel that it's in violation of their current leases that are out there saying that it's a, it's unfair rent increase based on the current lease language that they have. That's a pretty simplistic viewpoint on that. It's a pretty complicated, um, topic on there. But that is definitely one that the airport commission has wanted to talk about during the airport joint meeting is the elimination of this $280, um, flat fee. Um, the budget projections that I have, um, the current ones do have it included in there. Um, but I can go back to my modeling and, and back that out if that is, you know, and I, and I will have both models available for the joint workshop. But right now, the one that you saw does have that $280 incorporated in there, um, at this point. Um, that leads us to the other issue, the, kinda the third topic that the airport, um, wants to discuss during the joint workshop is the leases. Um, there's currently two versions of the leases. I don't have the dates as to when they were both enacted. Uh, but the airport commission is basically wanted a, a single lease out there. And from a city side, it'd be nicer to have one lease. We don't have to keep going back to which version of the lease does each individual have. Um, so a long-term goal there would be to get all leaseholders on one version. Um, I know the airport commission and some of the membership out there has some ideas as to what they'd wanna see. And then the city would also have some additional things, language that we'd wanna have in it to make sure that both parties' interests are protected in, in, in any lease revision that goes forward. Um, so just to summarize, the joint workshop, February 18th is the tentative scheduled date. That's a Tuesday. That is an existing council workshop. So we're just gonna transition that over to a joint workshop with the airport commission. I'm gonna hold it in the community room. Um, an email invite prior to the meeting will go out to the airport commission, city council. And we're also gonna include all of the current hangar owners out there as well. So anybody who has a hangar out there, um, will be invited to that meeting. Um, there'll be an open forum as part of that where the airport, um, commission members and hangar owners will be able to come in and speak to issues that are contemporary to, that they want council to be aware of. And I'll get that agenda released to all the membership that I just discussed prior to the airport, or prior to that meeting. So they'll have a full understanding of what's going on, um, during that. But that's basically a high-level synopsis of some of the contemporary issues that are faced in the airport. If you have any specific questions or any topics that you want me to kinda investigate or bring more information to, to you prior to that, if you need more information, let me know. I'm happy to do that for you.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions that council may have based on the information exchanged tonight?
I'd be happy to address any questions that have come along before then too. You know, if I can, if nothing else, we can muddy the water.
Sam, the wealth of information as it comes to background on.
Sure. I'd be happy to do that.
helpful though. I, I would like an opportunity to review the budget numbers. You know, if you can get that to us prior to the workshop, that would be, I would appreciate that just to review it ahead, ahead of time.
Do you want the projections in there or do you want just, uh, current 2020 budget? Or do you want both?
I think both. Yeah.
Any other questions or additional requests before we have workshop? And certainly there's some work time between now and then, so we can tee up a great discussion with, um, the airport commission. Okay. I was concluding the workshop portion of tonight's meeting. We're gonna move into staff updates and we'll start with Chief Newman, but I said, I expect that you're going to do, make an introduction.
Yes, this is, uh, Corey Murphy is our new, uh, building official. Uh, he started on December 30th. He comes from, uh, Monticello and then prior to that, uh, Golden Valley. So we're excited to have Corey here and, and, uh, start working with contractors.
Excited to have you.
Thank you.
Good. The second thing I wanna bring up is we had, this has been a busy week for us. We had a structure fire on Wednesday, uh, started in an exterior fire and worked its way into, uh, the residence. Were able to do a fairly quick knockdown, uh, limited fire damage. But the house did experience, um, fairly significant smoke damage. And then we had, uh, Scandia Fire, Hugo Fire and Forest Lake PD to assist us. And then last night, we had a structure fire in Columbus. That was a garage fire. Uh, we had Lionel Lakes, Wyoming and Hugo Fire assist us with that. Uh, one of the new tools that we actually deployed on this fire for the first time on any fire that we've had is StatX. It's a aerosol, uh, uh, repellent. Uh, it works by basically changing, um, the combustion or changing that, um, uh.
The chemical reaction?
Chemical reaction, thank you. Um, I'll hand that down. Don't pull the pin, please. Uh, our chief three arrived, uh, about two and a half minutes, two minutes before any other unit. Uh, realized that we had a fairly involved garage fire, opened the door. We had black smoke and heavy heat, uh, down to the floor. Um, pulled the StatX out, pulled the pin, threw it in, shut the door. And when the, uh, first arriving crew arrived and then set up, when they actually went in and tech, attacked the fire, uh, basically it became a smoldering fire. So, uh, we believe that this new tool that we have was, uh, pretty instrumental in keeping the fire from actually entering the main house and kept it in the garage. There's been, um, a few fire departments in the metro that have used this product and, um, have had similar results. So we actually bought this product through a donation to the fire department. Uh, we bought, uh, six sets. Um, the cases are actually as expensive as the product, but it has to be a pretty robust case. So when you're driving down the road, they don't break around and the pin doesn't come out. Uh, in this particular fire, we only used one of the two grenades and, uh, doesn't work out on every fire, but for fires that are contained in a fairly s- small area, garage, bedroom, um, I think we're gonna have great results and, and, uh, buy us some time and minimize damage.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for the donation, um, to those that provided it. And also, um, I think of interest is, um, hearing your kinda full assessment after you've had a number of opportunities to deploy and then determining whether it becomes part of just standard, no long, you know, standard funded item, no longer dependent upon a donation. So nice, nice tool to have. Thank you.
Thanks.
Dan?
I know, I'll be, unless you have questions.
Any questions for Dan? All right. Yeah, let's get that back into the hands of the trained professional. Sandy?
And I have nothing more to add tonight.
Perfect. Good.
I have nothing to add either.
Excellent. Patrick?
Uh, just a few things. I, uh, attended a meeting with Councilman Hosnick, uh, with American Legion to talk to them about their liquor license. I think that went well. Um, some or all of you may have seen the articles in the paper about faith, uh, Lutheran church and the tiny house situation and what they're possibly planning. Uh, just to let you know, we know very little about it at this point. We had a meeting with them about a year ago or maybe nine months ago. Uh, we will wait and see what their proposal is, if, if it comes forward, when it comes forward and address any of the situation, the items, the concerns. Um, so just asking not everybody to jump to conclusions. We have really not an idea where that's going. And, and finally, I'm going to recognize Ryan from the Forest Lake Times, cause he just told me before the meeting that this is his last meeting.
No.
And he is on to bigger and better things. And I'd like to thank him from, since I've seen him, it's been pretty fair and balanced reporting. So that's all I have.
Yeah, great.
Oh. You will leave giant shoes to fill, so thank you for your service. And best wishes and what's next. It's a lucky community or a luck, a lucky beat gets you, so.
Good luck in the new endeavor, whatever that happens to be.
And however we can help, uh, orientate and welcome a replacement, we're happy to do so.
Thanks, Ryan. Bridgette?
No update, thank you.
Excellent. Ryan?
Mayor City Council, just a friendly reminder of the, uh, public open house for Highway Eights at Lord of Lakes Lutheran Church tomorrow night at 5:30 PM, so.
Yep.
Thank you. Dave?
No update.
Very good. Council updates. Councilmember Gerard, we'll start with you.
I attended the planning commission meeting last Wednesday. Uh, not a whole lot covered. It was some land over by Panarucet. He still wants to till, so his interim could come up. I also attended Thursday night, the watershed, um, district meeting. We were on the agenda, uh, due to a letter that Administrator Casey had sent, uh, regarding wanting to work with the watershed on downtown. Um, so I gave a two-minute commercial. They did pull the item, um, cause of their lack of knowledge, I believe. Uh, Mike Kinney, who's the administrator there, is gonna meet with, uh, Ryan and Patrick on what, what we have in mind.
Thank you. Councilmember Munson?
Um, the only thing I have is the FLO meeting actually was last week at the same time as our workshops. So was not able to attend. And then the Rush Line Policy Meeting also was during a time I was, um, unable to attend.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Beistrom?
I'm just attended the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission, uh, meeting last week. Uh, they appointed, um, Terry Steenblock as chair and Tim Miller's vice chair again. So they'll continue their, their leadership there. Um, they are, uh, working on a lot of business-related items, um, reviewing and updating their promoter contract for Arts in the Park, uh, developing a sponsorship program. Jamie shared some, um, pretty great models from other communities. Um, and then really, uh, trying to hone in on, uh, kinda their first and second, uh, quarter tactics related to their work plan. Um, and then of course, I reviewed the Belts, uh, Park master plan as well. Um, I did wanna give a shout-out to Jamie. She also presented to the Rotary a couple weeks ago on the progress of the Belts Park, um, project. Uh, and actually did an outstanding job representing the city there. Um, received a cup, some citizen communication, um, on Castlewood. I'm trying to tell folks to be patient and watch Patrick on video, so they can get the information that they need. Um, and then received a really interesting, um, email from a resident in the 1800 block of Harrow Avenue who, uh, is really struggling to, uh, get internet service out there. And I'm just wondering if we've had, if we've done work around those kind of gaps. Um, and, um, maybe I'll forward this on to you, Patrick, and you can talk it over and help me formulate a response to her. What are we, are we working on anything? What are we working on? Um, but it's, it seems like it's, um, really a challenge for them and it's be, in, it's becoming more of a challenge as more and more people are working from home. Um, and, um, they're just, you know, lucky if they can get on at all. So, um, so anyway, just like.
I'm chiming in to add, our partners in, um, Scandia have been doing a lot of work in that area and have recently had some nice progress. So maybe some things we can, um, collaborate on.
That'd be great. So, and that's it for me.
Councilmember Hosnick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, as Patrick mentioned, he and I met with, um, the folks at the American Legion, uh, last Thursday evening. It was, uh, uh, something we just needed to discuss about some issues, uh, going on. And, um, my mission there was twofold actually. I'm a member there and also, you know, we sit on the city council and there's gonna be some issues we're gonna be, uh, talking about. Uh, there had to been, I don't know, half a dozen of their folks there. So it was a really good, um, meeting. I think we got a lot done, so. Uh, but that meant that I kinda skipped out on the school board meeting was, uh, but they, they had registered a short meeting that night and it was, and then plus a couple workshops. So I felt I could try to get this other mission done. So thanks a lot. That was all I had.
Very good. Um, just a quick update this evening. I did meet with a representative, um, from the census on the complete count, um, initiative. And we had, there's a number of resources available to us as a city to consider around education, around the upcoming census and so just some basic tactics around, um, um, when, what to expect, um, how to participate, why it's important. Um, and so there's, we have a number of options to consider and I will sit down with staff later. We can talk through what that might look like and build that into that communication plan we just talked about. Um, and the, the number of, a number of communities in our area are doing similar, similar initiatives. Um, Cliff Notes version, um, actual sign-up and kind of go-live starts in March. Um, there is a period of time, um, between March and the summer to get people to self, um, register and self-participate before actual, um, individuals would be going door-to-door later in the summer. And so there's a number of opportunities to kind of just get it checked off the list, mark it done and, um, be able to be counted and move on. Um, workshop for the EDA was held right before this meeting. Um, I would direct council to take a look at the materials. Um, the EDA did, um, receive the results and the full study from the Humphrey Institute. Um, number of great observations and it was great, it was a great work. It's a great piece of, um, I guess, great piece of work for us to have as we consider our next steps. for us to have as we consider next steps, and it, it confirmed some things that we have talked about for a long time and also presented some other, um, kind of interesting ideas and things that sometimes you just need to step back and, um, be, be a third-party, independent third-party that doesn't live here every single day, um, and it's just interesting, I always hear those interesting observations of like, oh yeah, we probably could do that, and there's a mix of large items to tackle as well as, um, some, some nice kind of little hanging fruit and things that would be relatively easy, like, we have a great bike trail and no bike racks, like, well, we could probably take care of that, so, um, take a look at that, take a look at that full report, it is online as part of the EDA minutes. That will also be information that is going to be used by the downtown group, we are looking at a kickoff meeting for that downtown group in February, um, and if you have individuals you would like to have nominated as part of that process, please pass those on to either Dan or I. Um, we also solicited that, those nominations from the EDA today, compiling the list, and we'll get, um, a good group started for that downtown group. That's all I have for updates this evening, and that is the end of our, um, active agenda. We are going to move into a closed session and...
Councilmember Beistrom?
Madam Mayor, I move to close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota's statute, section 13D dot 05 subdivision 3C 3 to develop or consider offers or counter offers for the sale of the Headwaters 123 property, PID 29 dot 032 dot 21 dot 23 dot 0002 and PID 29 dot 032 dot 21 dot 24 dot 0001 located in the city of Forest Lake. The closed meeting will be held in the Forest Lake Room and will commence immediately. Once the closed meeting is completed, the city council will reconvene the open meeting portion of tonight's city council meeting in council chambers. There being no further items on the agenda, once back in open session, the council will simply adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and we're in a closed session.